Yeah, I want to welcome you all to the Planning Commission meeting today. This is the 19th of January. It will be a special meeting regarding the Palisades Project up in Tahoe. But at any rate, to get the meeting started, we want to do a flag salute, so if everybody could join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then if we do a roll call?
Commissioner Powers?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Woodward?
Here.
Commissioner Demattei?
Here.
Commissioner Dahlgren?
Here.
Commissioner Herzog?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so at any rate, this time, I want to welcome everybody, and thank you for your understanding with the meeting location changes that have been required by the weather. We, I guess, were planning on going up to Tahoe, but I hear that there's change only going over the summit this morning, and the weather last night surprised us. So it was a good decision, but we are going to have a split meeting today, basically. Today's Planning Commission meeting is open both to virtual and in-person attendance here in Auburn and also in the North Tahoe Event Center in Kings Beach. The meeting may also be observed online through Placer County website and the Zoom link listed on the meeting agenda. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press number nine or star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open the public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not on the agenda, and a consent item or a timed item. Each commenter will be entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all the meeting participants. To ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so, please be advised that today's meeting hearing, today's hearing is being recorded. And I ask that, okay, now it's time for me to ask for the Planning Director's report. And we have a new Planning Director here in Placer County, and so I don't know what you would like to report on, but you're sure welcome to report on anything.
Well, good morning, Chair Johnson, members of the Planning Commission, Chris Pohouli, new Planning Director, my third day on the job here. I do want to provide a brief introduction, and I do actually have a few updates for you this morning. So again, Chris Pohouli, I am excited to be serving the county in this capacity, coming to the county after nearly 24 years of working for the city and county of Sacramento, most recently as a principal planner with the Sacramento County Planning Department. Although I've only been here for a few days, I already know that we have a great team here in planning, and I look forward to working with them, working with you, working with the development community, and with the residents of Placer County to continue to do the good work here for the county of Placer. So that's a little bit about me. A couple of updates that I do want to provide to you. The DFE variance that the Planning Commission heard last week has been appealed, and staff will be scheduling that item for consideration by the Board. That will need to occur before mid-April of '23. On February 28th, the Board will be reviewing the proposed beekeeping code amendments, which the Commission recommended for approval with modification on November 10th. And then lastly, the Commission's next meeting that is going to be, that would be scheduled on February 9th will likely be canceled. We'll keep you informed as soon as a decision is made on that. And that would mean that your next regularly scheduled meeting will occur on February 16th. And that concludes my remarks.
Okay, well, thank you, and boy, welcome aboard. We appreciate seeing you here.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, so, wait. You're welcome to say what you have to say. Sorry about that.
Chair and Commissioner, I just want to continue on with the Planning Director's comment. At this point, I just want to make some comments regarding our December 15 Planning Commission meeting. I think during the discussion item of the development review process, I failed to provide some of the responsiveness to the Commission that we should have, and specifically, I want to apologize to both the Commission and Commissioner Woodward for not being as responsive as we should have. To extent, we did send the responses out subsequently, and again, I do want to apologize for that part. Going forward, my staff and I are trying to look at how we can engage the Commission more, so there are some opportunities for that engagement. Along those lines, there will be some training opportunities for staff and the Commission. I can see three coming up in this calendar year. League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy specifically for city and county planning commissioners. The California County Planning Commissioners Association, really specifically for county planning commissioners, and staff would again pair up with commissioners to go look at what the state faces as a whole, all the commissioners throughout the state. There are a lot of commonalities through those kinds of training opportunities. There's actually a third one sponsored by a sister entity of CSAC and League of California City called Institute for Local Government, Regional Planning Commissioners Training, and that's actually also for city and county planning commissioners. So those are opportunities coming forward. One other note on this is that the Board of Supervisors just recently adopted governance and rules of procedures, and my understanding is the Commission doesn't have something like that, but it's really something that all the commissions should be following in terms of both governance rules as well as the rules of procedures that the Board sets. We will be working with the Commission on that in the near future as well. Just to extent that I do want to again apologize for our lack of responsiveness, particularly on my part, and my apologies to Commissioner, specifically Woodward as well. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see, Mr. Woodward, you wanted to make a comment?
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that very much, and to David and to others, fellow commissioners in particular, but other staff members as well. This apology really extends, I suppose, to the entire set of comments, but particularly to the CEO, whom I was, I think, I guess the language was indelicate at best and inappropriate, and so I apologize to her. I want to be very clear, I respect the staff, I respect the CEO, I respect the position of the CEO, and I have no excuse except that it was an error on my part, and I apologize for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point in time, I'd like to open a public comment, and this would be for any item that is not on today's agenda. And as you're aware, today's agenda is the Palisades Project, so if you want to talk about the Palisades, we're going to open a public comment later, but this would be anything that's not on the agenda. Is there any public comment?
Chair and Commissioner, if I can just kind of kick it off a little bit, and then maybe I can hand it over to our senior planner, Patrick Dobbs, to kind of give you overview of the project. I think for the most part...
Okay, yeah, we got to, excuse me, we got to see if there's any public that wants to make a statement that's not on the agenda. Sorry about that.
I apologize.
Yeah. And I guess, do we have some folks up in Tahoe, or anybody anywhere that has a comment that's not on the agenda?
No public comments at this time.
We have two online, so... Okay, so...
Hi, Seth, you can go ahead and unmute your mic, and you can begin your public comment. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Hey, so ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm sorry, the Commission, my name's Seth Howard, I'm a field representative for Northern California Carpenters Union. We represent approximately 37,000 carpenters in Northern California and over 1,200 contractors. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I do briefly want to tell you about some of our core values, apprenticeship with a state-certified apprenticeship program. In my opinion, it's probably the best training in the country for any carpenters. I've been involved with apprenticeships in three or four different states, and by far the one in Northern California seems the most state-of-the-art. We have state-of-the-art training facilities all throughout Northern California. Insurance, all of our working members receive a Cadillac-style insurance, medical insurance plan with dental and vision. And what I feel is most important to us in this county, local hire. So we're all about local hires, all self-explanatory, and I find it's a big problem, you know, with the housing crisis going on up here in Tahoe and in the county. We're not just going to build ourselves out of it, we have to be like really thinking about good-paying jobs for locals, and that's all I want to say. I just wanted to just get the word out there about what we're about. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Cheryl, if you could go ahead and unmute, and you can begin making your comments, please state your name for the record.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Cheryl Workhamout, I live in Western Placer County. I wanted to raise my concerns about the number of projects that are coming in that do not have a design review committee recommendation. To me, we went through the process, if it isn't listed, then that says to me there's a lack of accountability and ownership for who is submitting the document. For Winery 8 on December 15th, there was no design review committee listed. Also, about an hour and 20 minutes of the video is missing, and the notice of preparation only went to 300 neighbors when this is the largest Placer County winery to be proposed. And it will also impact Placer County residents in totality. The other thing about a notice of preparation is that none of the agencies were listed that we're contacting. So the public doesn't know if air quality, water, any of the critical agencies have been notified on any project. And this has been, I've looked at several NOPs, and they're just not there. I will be asking for a public records request for some of these to make sure that the agencies and contacts are actually being contacted. So I hope that the planning department will listen to this feedback and take some appropriate action. And welcome to the new planning director. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? Okay, well, at this time, we'll be moving on to our regularly scheduled meeting on Palisades. And so, David, would you like to kick it off as a staff report?
Thank you again, Chair and Commissioner, David Kwong, your agency director. I guess that's a little premature.
That's okay, no problem.
So I'm not going to repeat a whole bunch of stuff or information that Patrick, our senior planner and project planner here, will go into. He has a very detailed overview for you, particularly on the process in the last probably 11 years plus. I think to the extent that many of the commissioners, if not all of the commissioners, were not here during that time, we're going to be providing a presentation that kind of explains the history as well as the overall process, to some degree, the litigation that has occurred, as well, of course, the project specifics and where we're at today and where we're going to be going in the process moving forward. I did want to also say that, as the Chair mentioned, we have planned and planned and planned to be in Tahoe for today's meeting, and we were looking at the weather throughout the weekend, even before that, and a call was made basically on yesterday morning in terms of our noticing requirement. We had to make sure that everybody, including the Commission and staff, could arrive in a timely and safely, safe way, and we just couldn't assure that in terms of getting to Tahoe by 10:00 a.m. So we pivoted. That's already here. But at the same time, as you mentioned too, again, Chair, we're having an entire, an entire team of Tahoe staff, staff the North Tahoe Event Center as well, and so we have access there, we have access here, and then we have access through Zoom. We're trying to provide every transparent way of getting input into this process, and you'll hear probably from Patrick later, how many comment letters we have received so far, which are in the hundreds and hundreds. So I think from that aspect, we're actually doing a good job of getting the input. And so there will be a process afterwards in terms of responding to this, these comments on the EIR, and there will be, all written comments will be responded to, and everything will be respectfully received in terms of the input, as just in this part and here, as well as any other place. So with that, I'm going to pump it over to Patrick to go into much more detail of the presentation. Thank you, Chair and Commissioner.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, not Patrick Dobbs, yeah, he's coming. I am Alex Fish, supervising planner with the Planning Services Division and the manager of the Village at Palisades Project. Just wanted to orient you a little bit before we turn things over to Patrick. I manage the prior entitlement process and EIR preparation of the Village at Squaw Valley Specific Plan, as the project was known at that time, from 2011 to 2016, and am now joined by senior planner Patrick Dobbs, who assists in leading the current entitlement effort as well as the partially revised draft EIR process. We also have several other county staff in attendance with us as support staff and our environmental consultant, Ascent Environmental. Patrick will be making staff's presentation this morning, and he will introduce the county team members, the Ascent staff, the applicant team, and with that, I'm going to turn things over to Patrick now. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson and Commissioners, I'm Patrick Dobbs, Planning Services Division, and as has been introduced, this item is a public hearing to receive comments on the draft Partially Revised Environmental Impact Report for the Village at Palisades Tahoe Specific Plan, formerly known as the Village at Squaw Valley Specific Plan. The specific plan is located in the eastern portion of the county in the community of Olympic Valley. It's nine miles south of the town of Truckee and seven miles northwest of Tahoe City. The project area is within the Squaw Valley General Plan, which is a community plan that covers 4,700 acres of Olympic Valley. The specific plan area encompasses just over 93 acres. There is a lot of history on this project. The application was originally submitted in 2011. Following extensive community meetings and input, the project density and intensity was reduced in 2014. In 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved the project entitlements, and those consisted of certification of the final EIR, approval of the specific plan, and the development standards and design guidelines. It's a rezone of the plan area. There were amendments to the Squaw Valley General Plan and land use ordinance, approval of development agreement, large lot vesting tentative map, and water supply assessment. Following the approval of the project, a lawsuit was filed alleging SEQA violations. And in 2018, the county prevailed at the trial court. The Superior Court ruling denied the entirety of the lawsuit. The trial court ruling was appealed, and in 2021, so three years later, the Court of Appeals issued their decision and upheld the county's EIR analysis on the majority of the SEQA allegations. However, the Court of Appeals did identify some areas in the 2016 EIR where the analysis was deficient and that technical corrections were needed. So because of those deficiencies in the EIR, the Board of Supervisors was required to decertify the final EIR and rescind and vacate the previous project approvals and entitlements. To be clear, the court did not say the project was too big or something similar. The discretion of whether this is the right project lies with the county. The court said that, or identified some deficiencies in the EIR that must be corrected before the county can reconsider the project. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive comments on the completeness and accuracy of the draft Partially Revised EIR. It is SEQA guidance and county policy to hold public hearings on all EIRs for projects that are being reviewed by the Commission. The EIR consultant, Ascent Environmental, there's, I'll introduce the project team here at the end, but Ascent and county staff have partially revised sections of this 2016 EIR to address the court ruling regarding public transit, construction noise, hydrology, water quality and air quality in the Lake Tahoe Basin, and wildfire evacuation. So today is the time to discuss those issues identified by the court. This isn't the opportunity to discuss the merits of the project. There will be future hearings with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors when the merits of the project approval will be discussed. The notice of availability for the partially, or draft Partially Revised EIR was broadly disseminated to adjacent property owners, libraries, state and federal agencies and tribes, public agencies and school districts, county departments, the Olympic Valley Municipal Advisory Council, the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, the Donner Summit Municipal Advisory Council, and was posted in the Sierra Sun and Sacramento Bee newspapers. We have an email distribution list of over 1,000 people on this project. We've been pushing out a lot of notices. We've received over 600 written comments at this time, so I continue to be impressed by the effectiveness of our noticing, and again, apologize for any inconvenience regarding the meeting relocation today. Transitioning to the project here. So what is a specific plan? I mean, today, the project could be redeveloped individually, lot by lot, piecemeal. The specific plan is a comprehensive master plan for a ski resort village. It's a policy document to guide development. It identifies permissible land uses and development standards and design guidelines as well as the plan area infrastructure. So it is programmatic in the sense that the applicant will still need to submit applications for building permits, still need to provide will serve letters, et cetera, prior to, you know, future ground disturbance in construction. So the specific plan area is outlined in red on the slide. It consists of the main village and the east parcel, and the east parcel is there on the inset in the lower right of the slide. The main village is at the west end of the valley. It's 85 acres at the base of Palisades Resort. The area is primarily developed with surface parking lots today. It's bounded by Olympic Valley Road and residential development to the north, ski lifts and related operations to the south. There's existing resort accommodations and facilities, like the, you know, Intrawest Village here to the west, and a meadow and golf course to the east. Washishu, if I'm saying that correctly, is the name of the creek. It's formerly Squaw Creek, Washishu Creek bisects the main village. Focusing on the east parcel in the inset, it is 8.8 acres. It's at the east end of the valley, about a third of a mile west of the intersection of Highway 89 and Olympic Valley Road. It's across the street from the Olympic Valley Public Service District and Fire Station, and primarily surrounded by single-family residential development. Here are some photos of the existing conditions at the main village, you know, particularly this one in the upper right, kind of get some sense of where the existing building development is and where the existing parking areas are that are really kind of the areas of redevelopment for this project at the base area. These are the existing land use designations. Again, focusing on the main village, what jumps out to you is all the red. That's village commercial zoning, and it allows for the majority of the proposed uses under the specific plan. Again, this zoning is here intended to encourage the creation of a destination resort. So the red are the opportunity areas. They can be built out. There is some high-density residential zoning on orange in the west end of the project area. In the southern part, the purple is the heavy commercial zoning. This is where the mountain operations currently exist. And there are a number of disconnected and fragmented sections of, segments of conservation preserve and forest recreation shown in green. So, you know, this is, is kind of the mosaic of zoning that is out there today. The east parcel, focusing there, about the westernmost two-thirds is currently entrance commercial, and the easternmost third is high-density residential. So contrast that with the proposed specific plan land use designations. The main village, the commercial nodes are concentrated into two areas. The village commercial core is in red, the village commercial neighborhood in yellow. The heavy commercial mountain operations area has been moved to the west end of the plan area. Blue is remaining day skier parking. There will be a new fire station constructed in the blue area. And the specific plan provides much better alignment and an increase in area of open space and recreation areas shown in green and designated as conservation preserve and forest recreation. So buildout under the specific plan would result in 1,493 bedrooms. This would be divided amongst 850 units. There is almost 298,000 square feet of commercial. That includes skier services, restaurants, retail, as well as the mountain adventure camp. Of that 298, 91,000 is replacement. So this is a scaling back of the theoretical development potential that would otherwise be allowed today under Squaw Valley General Plan or Community Plan land use designations. And again, wrapping up with the inset here on the east parcel, entrance commercial would remain along the frontage, and it would be surrounded and buffered by conservation preserve to buffer those surrounding residential neighborhoods. So I have a number of illustrations of buildout and just some of the various components that I'd like to go through, you know, kind of starting with the commercial core and neighborhood. The village commercial core is the higher-intensity area. This is residential and tourist accommodation above, retail, restaurant. This is concentrated in close proximity to the ski slopes. This does include the mountain adventure camp, as I mentioned. This is an indoor recreation facility, activity area. It's anticipated to include things like swimming pools, climbing walls, arcades, movie theater, bowling, you know, ski alternatives. The village neighborhood is the lesser-intensity quieter setting. It does have a similar range of accommodations in terms of timeshare hotel condominium, fractional ownership cabins, but it's going to have fewer neighborhood service, commercial, and retail offerings. Appendix B of the specific plan includes the development standards and design guidelines, and there are lots of specific standards for the project. These include things like setbacks, floor area ratios, building height, and building height step backs, and articulation requirements. So this is all being done to create a pedestrian-scale village with very, with a varied built environment and mountain aesthetics and architecture. There is adequate parking facilities and sufficient parking located throughout the project. There is comprehensive stream restoration. The project seeks to improve upon environmentally damaging legacy development that was completed for construction of the 1960 Winter Olympics. So there's comprehensive restoration of Washishu Creek and the Olympic Channel tributary. A number of hydrologic benefits, this is, involves widening the channel, creating meanders, slowing the flow, reducing turbidity, and flooding, and improving aquifer and wetland recharge. And finally, a number of park and recreation improvements. There's an interconnected bike and pedestrian network throughout the village. There are interpretive nature areas. There's trailhead improvements to the Granite Chief Trail and Shirley Canyon Trail, to include flush restrooms, parking, and signage. There'd be a new flush toilet at the Squaw Valley Park, and a new Class 1 trail connector along the east parcel frontage. And so just shifting gears and getting a closer look at the east parcel there, this is the existing conditions. You can see a large portion of the site is currently disturbed. There is an existing encroachment for vehicle ingress and egress onto Olympic Valley Road. So the east parcel would include employee housing for up to 300 employees. These are predominantly configured in studio or dormitory-style accommodations. There's an employee recreation fitness center that's integrated in the building. There is a two-level parking structure for employees, an overflow day skier parking. There'd be a shuttle back and forth between the resort. There's a 5,000-square-foot retail market operated by the resort, will offer discounts to employees, and a 15,000-square-foot shipping and receiving facility. This would intercept large delivery vehicles and use smaller clean-fueled vehicles to deliver to and from the resort during off-peak hours. And again, just pointing out that trail... And again, just pointing out that trail connection in terms of multimodal transportation options for employees to and from the resort with this new Class One trail connector. Shifting to the 2016 EIR. This was a comprehensive evaluation of the environmental resource areas shown on the screen. It really covered the summation of the environmental impacts that this project could contribute to. The EIR analyzed 79 total project-specific impacts and 44 total cumulative impacts, and included a comprehensive package of feasible mitigation measures. So this is a programmatic EIR with 80, that's eight zero, existing mitigation measures that still apply and reduce the majority of the impacts less than significant. But as you'd expect on a project of this size and duration, there are some significant and unavoidable impacts resulting. In accordance with SEQA and legal requirements, the county doesn't need to address comments and issues that were not overturned by the court. So shifting to the overview of the 2022 Partially Revised Draft EIR. Again, the public comment period runs through January 30th. The Partially Revised EIR has consistent chapter and section numbering with the 2016 EIR. You know, this includes supplemental analysis in the areas that the court said were previously inadequate. So focusing on on the revisions to Chapter Nine, Transportation and Circulation, they include reduced impacts related to transit. Chapter Ten, Air Quality analyzes potential effects of increased VMT on Lake Tahoe Basin's air quality. Chapter Eleven, Noise, expanded includes an expanded discussion of thresholds of significance used for assessing noise impacts, potential construction noise impacts, and the totality of sensitive receptors that may be affected by construction activities. Chapter Thirteen, Hydrology and Water Quality Revisions focus on the potential effects of increased VMT on Lake Tahoe water quality and clarity. Chapter Fifteen, Hazardous Materials and Hazards, Wildfire includes expanded analysis of the project's potential impacts related to emergency evacuation, including estimated times of availability for emergency responders to provide traffic control at key intersections. So there is a summary of mitigate the revised mitigation measures in Chapter or Table Two-Dash-One of the Partially Revised Draft EIR. This is not a complete reprinting of the 2016 EIR, but it does include sufficient information and to address the issues identified by the ruling and enough background and context for the lay reader to understand the analysis. So I'll dive into each of those sections here. The EIR revisions related to Chapter Nine and Transportation and Circulation, the court ruling identified one item requiring discussion and analysis. This is related to Impact Nine-Dash-Seven, which is a contribution of fair share or create a community service area or community facilitated district to cover the increased transit service costs. A particular issue is the large ridership of Palisades workers that travel the 89 corridor to and from work in the morning and afternoon. And so the court ruling basically determined an insufficient level of detail in the mitigation measure, and so the inadequacies identified have been corrected in the revised EIR. There's been revisions to mitigation measure nine dash seven that provides details on how this mitigation will result in increased transit service to ensure that the project will not generate demand for the transit that would exceed available service capacity. With implementation of mitigation measure nine dash seven, this impact would be reduced to less than significant. EIR revisions to Chapter Eleven and Noise, the court ruling identified two items related to noise as requiring additional discussion and analysis. The first item deals with the geographic scope of construction noise analysis and the use of a 50-foot radius for evaluating construction noise impacts on sensitive receptors. The second issue identifier, the second issue was the implement date and deals with implementation details of mitigation measure eleven dash one A, which required operations and techniques to be replaced with quieter procedures, so using things like welding instead of riveting, mixing concrete off-site. So construction noise levels are generally exempt, however, on a project like this. I mean, when construction and excessive noise generation occurs for extended periods of time, people become disrupted and annoyed and stressed, particularly during the nighttime hours. So the revised EIR includes new and revised mitigation measures to mitigate construction noise impacts. And although a substantial noise reduction would be achieved through implementation of these mitigation measures, because of the potential for construction activity that may be required, for instance, during the night, you know, such as a continuous concrete pour, the magnitude of required decibel reductions for construction noise are not expected to be attained under all circumstances over 25 years. Therefore, the draft revised environmental impact report concludes the construction noise impacts would remain significant and unavoidable. Ooh, was I on the wrong slide there? Sorry about that. The EIR revisions to Chapter Thirteen, Hydrology and Water Quality. The court ruling identifies three items related to hydrology and water quality requiring further analysis. The first is provide setting information specific to Lake Tahoe. The second relates to the analysis of potential vehicle miles traveled, VMT impacts on Lake Tahoe water quality. The third item relates to the significance thresholds and impact conclusions associated with the analysis of VMT impacts on Lake Tahoe water quality. And so those inadequacies in the ruling are corrected in the Partially Revised Draft EIR. It does include environmental and regulatory setting information specific to Lake Tahoe and Lake Tahoe water quality and water clarity. There is a new discussion, Impact Thirteen-Dash-Nine, that specifically evaluates project-generated VMT effects on Lake Tahoe water quality and clarity. So the connection between VMT and Lake Clarity really relates to effects on tailpipe emissions and and crushed road abrasives, and so there's discussion in this section regarding atmospheric nitrogen jet deposition from tailpipe emissions and roadway management practices as it relates to Lake Tahoe Total Maximum Daily Load, or TMDL. So the revised EIR concludes that VMT in the Tahoe Basin generated by the Palisades project would not result in a substantial degradation of Lake Tahoe water quality or clarity, and would not conflict with TRPA thresholds related to water quality and clarity, and therefore this impact would be less than significant. Chapter revisions to Chapter Fifteen in the EIR involving hazardous materials and hazards, this is specific to the Impact Fifteen-Dash-Four regarding interference with an adopted emergency evacuation plan, and this is related to traffic modeling that was used to estimate the time needed to evacuate Olympic Valley in response to a wildfire emergency. And the court ruling identified one issue related to evacuation as requiring modifications. And so the discussion here includes those those that inadequacy is corrected in the revised EIR. There's discussion about the East Side Emergency Evacuation Team Plan, which prescribes specific responsibilities for first responders conducting an evacuation on the east side of Placer County, and validates the assumptions of the 2016 traffic modeling that that personnel would provide traffic control at key intersections during an emergency evacuation, and corrects information regarding the agencies that would provide that traffic control. Concludes that with implementation of mitigation measures, the impact from potential interference with adopted emergency evacuation plan would be reduced to a less than significant level. Today, we ask that comments be limited to issues that are contained in the Partially Revised Draft EIR. The draft EIR circulation and 60-day public review period ends at 5:00 PM on January 30th. The county will consider comments received on the contents of the CIR within the public comment period and will prepare written responses as required by CEQA. There will be additional opportunities for public input on the full entitlements as the specific plan moves its way back through the planning process, including scheduled meetings with the Olympic Valley MAC, as well as hearings before the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors on the entitlement. Again, public comment period closes on January 30th. The county addresses for written comments and electronic comments are on the screen. All of the project documentation is available on the project website. Staff recommends the Planning Commission receive and provide comments on the draft Partially Revised Environmental Impact Report, and direct staff to respond to all written and oral comments in the final revised EIR. If I could just make a couple of introductions here before I conclude. Again, I mentioned the Ascent Environmental Team here in the second row. This is Gary Jacobs, Sarah Henningson, and Sean Bechta. Behind them is our environmental coordinator, Lee Chavez. Katie Jackson is with Department of Public Works Traffic, and John Gard is with Farron Pierce. He's a traffic consultant. The gentleman in the far back corner, Richard Moorhead, and Will Garner, also DPW folks that can help with it. So we have a number of staff here and experts to address any questions that you have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do believe the applicant would like to speak following staff, but happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay. Any questions from the commission at this point? Okay, well, we'll let the applicant step forward then.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. My name's Whit Manley with Remy Moose Manley, a law firm in Sacramento specializing in environmental law. Been involved in this project both before you and with the courts for quite some time. The applicant team is here for Palisades, and so if you have any questions for them or for me, we'd be happy to address them. Patrick did an excellent job of summarizing both the history, nature of the plan that has been proposed, the court proceedings, and what the revised draft EIR is designed to do. And I'm not going to repeat what he said because it was an excellent and accurate overview. There are a couple of comments I want to offer in addition to that, but I will be brief because this is mainly about hearing from the public and its comments on the revised draft EIR. The Court of Appeal issued its decision in August of 2021, and that is the reason we're here today, because the Court of Appeal found four areas in which the EIR required additional information. And as Patrick noted, the court did not say that the project was good, bad, or indifferent. That's a county decision to make. The court just simply said, in these four areas, more information was needed before you make your decision. And that's exactly what the revised draft EIR is designed to do, to provide that information that the Court of Appeal found wanting. In case you're wondering, the Court of Appeal did take three years to issue its decision after the trial court ruled. That is unusually long. There's actually a state law that says that courts of appeal are supposed to resolve appeals within one year if they involve CEQA claims. This court took three, and that is unusual. So be it. It is what it is. It does mean that from the time that the county approved the project and certified the EIR, a little more than six years have passed, and that, too, is a bit unusual to be just sort of grinding through the courts for that length of time. But so be it. We do support the efforts of county staff and its consultants to address the issues that were identified by the Court of Appeal, and if there's anything that we can do to facilitate the county's analysis, we're happy to do that. I want to talk a little bit about some of the comments that you're likely to hear today, and I say this based on the many letters that have and emails that have been submitted already. I expect that you'll hear from commenters that the county should go back and prepare an entirely new EIR. We don't think that's appropriate, candidly. The Court of Appeal said these are four issues that you need to develop additional information on, and it is entirely appropriate that the revised draft EIR focused on providing that Now, if folks submit comments saying, here's some additional information that we think you should take into account by virtue of the lengthy amount of time that this project was in the courts, and therefore there is additional information you should consider, this is their opportunity to provide that information. And if they do, then I anticipate and encourage the county to respond to any such information in the final EIR. That's the right place to respond to those sorts of comments. I do want to say that the EIR that was certified in 2016 was quite comprehensive, notwithstanding the Court of Appeal's decision, and it was very conservative in its assumptions. It wasn't as though we were skating close to the edge of the ice in performing that analysis. It was conservative in all the sorts of ways that you would expect an EIR prepared by the county to be conservative. I would like to cite one example of quote-unquote "new information" that I suspect will be presented to you today that you ought to take into account, and I base this on some letters that the county has already received, and that has to do with water supply. In 2016, the county approved a water supply assessment for this project. That water supply assessment was based on modeling performed by the consultant for the Olympic Valley Public Services District, approved by the Olympic Valley PSD, and then ultimately approved by the Board of Supervisors as part of the project entitlements. In the litigation that followed, the water supply assessment and the analysis of water supply was one of the issues that was challenged by Sierra Watch. That claim was rejected. The Court of Appeal does not require the county to revisit that issue. It's not addressed in the revised draft EIR for precisely that reason, because the analysis was upheld. Now, six years later, we've received information or comments stating that the the West is in a severe drought, and therefore the water supply assessment and analysis should be revisited. The approved assessment looked, as it had to, at multiple dry year scenarios. And in addition, the assessment and modeling took very conservative assumptions about groundwater recharge, water demand, and the other elements of the analysis. It already was conservative, as it ought to have been. For water supply, commenters have cited facts about the climate and about the fact that the West, notwithstanding what's been happening the last three weeks, about the fact that the West has been in a severe drought. And those are facts that didn't exist in 2016, but here we are six years later. I do want to note that there are additional facts that have become available that speak specifically to water supply developed by the Olympic Valley PSD itself. The district has performed a six-year review of its water supply, basically gathering data on water demand, groundwater levels, and so forth, and just in December of 2022, issued a six-year report covering the water years 2016 through 2021. And I'd like to quote from one of the conclusions in Section Seven of that report. The ink is barely dry on it. The report itself is quite lengthy, and it actually provides data on groundwater levels and so and water demand and so forth. And it concludes, and I'm quoting, that groundwater wells within the valley, quote, "have exhibited stable trends in water year 2016 to 2021, as contrasted with water years 2011 through 2015." Groundwater levels have been stable in the valley. Those are facts, and they suggest, if anything, that the water supply assessment that is already approved remains valid. Now, folks are welcome. In fact, they will, and I encourage them to, provide information that they think facts may have changed, and those facts ought to be considered by the county in responding to comments on the revised draft EIR. If they have that information, this is their chance to provide it, and the county and its consultants will have an opportunity to respond. That's the way the process is supposed to work. We support that. Finally, I do want to address a non-EIR issue because it's such an important one, and that's employee housing. We all know that the shortage of workforce housing was existed in 2016, and it exists today. One of the reasons it exists today is because the project included 300 beds, and those were not built while the litigation was pending. So we would like to build those 300 beds. County policy allows for providing workforce housing by dedicating land or paying a fee. We want to build the units on site. That is our proposal. And we're committing to building all of those onsite units upfront as part of Phase One before any market rate housing or hospitality units get built. We are going to exceed our obligations, and we are going to do them front-loaded because we see the problem, too. Now, that's not covered in the EIR because it's not really, and it's not an issue that was addressed by the Court of Appeal. was addressed by the Court of Appeal, and it doesn't relate to impacts. It addressed to addressing a problem. But we want you to know we are serious about our desire to address that problem. The appropriate way to do that, in my view, would be in a development agreement. That development agreement proposed will be part of the entitlement package we envision that gets presented to this commission for its recommendations. And I fully expect and encourage you to hold us to the commitment that I have just made. Our team is available here to answer questions now or at the end of public comment, whatever your preference, but we really appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and we look forward to hearing what the public has to say. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we'll give you an opportunity for questions afterwards, but if the commissioners have any questions now, you're sure welcome.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just one question prior to public comment. And this actually deals with workforce housing, and perhaps it was, your comment was the result of some of the comments that I sent to Clayton as a matter of public disclosure, Clayton and to Alex and to the former Chris, actually. But this is just a quick question, and the reason I want to do this before public comment is I think it might inform some public comment downstream and maybe answer some questions ahead of time. I don't know. But you made the comment about 300. You said it wasn't addressed in the DIR, but on page 1-7, employee housing is actually discussed under East Parcel.
It is. It's part of the project, for sure.
Right. So it is in this draft DIR, but the comments that I got when I looked for clarification from Alex indicated that there's 99 housing units available right now.
That's right.
Those will be demolished, but they need to be rebuilt.
Correct.
Okay. And then also, there's a requirement, apparently. Maybe it's, maybe it's a, my sense is that it's actually a requirement by the county that since there's 574 full-time equivalent jobs associated with this particular proposal, that the additional requirement for employee housing would be 287 plus 99. So the total employee housing associated with the east side of this development or elsewhere in the Olympic Valley actually comes out to 386. Does that make sense from the applicant's perspective?
I don't have the math in front of me, so I'm going to hedge.
We're getting north-south head nods.
But as you describe it, your math makes sense.
Okay.
But we certainly expect that an analysis of workforce housing under county policy is going to be part of the package that gets presented to you. It is true that we do have to demolish 99 beds in order to be able to go forward with the project. That is, candidly, one reason why we want to front-load
Yeah.
... the employee housing, but we don't want to merely replace those 99 beds. We want to build 201, 201 in addition to those 99. So we'll have a net increase of 201 beds, Phase 1, right out of the gate.
Right.
And in effect, that is pre-loading the employee housing, which we think is entirely appropriate. We want to do.
Yeah, and so I thought this was important that the public hear this because there were definitely some letters that talked about this. And so you do have a commitment, it appears, for more than, well over 300, 380 or so employee housing units. And the benefit of that, of course, is that that would ultimately cut down vehicle miles traveled, particulate matter that might wind up in the lake, and those sorts of things if we can bring more housing into that area.
We think there are many benefits associated with having workforce housing on-site for the county, for the environment, for us.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that it?
I have one.
Okay.
Could you introduce the applicants who are here today?
I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Jason Hansford. I'm Vice President of Development for Palisades Tahoe. I am the project applicant. We also have our CEO for the resort, Dee Byrne, and Tom Fiden, who handles all our marketing as well.
Is it?
Oh, sorry. And Dan, your numbers are correct. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's see, at this time, I'm going to open the hearing up to the public comment, and this might be a little bit complicated because we have several people up in Tahoe that are going to comment as well as here. And I hope everybody here, raise your hand if you're going to make a public comment in the room here. We just have two?
Three.
Three? Okay. And so then, I guess probably we'll, my cheat sheet here says that we're going to do Tahoe first, but since we just have three here, we might as well do those and then go to Tahoe. And so at any rate, I'm going to open up the public comment. Make sure you write your name down in the sign-up list. I guess you've probably done that already. And if you end up in Tahoe also, and in Tahoe particularly, the staff will read out the names of the people, and then they'll come up in threes, and we'll hear their comments. I guess, as you're aware, we have multiple locations, so it could be a little complicated. Let me see, I want to emphasize that each person has three minutes, and for purposes of efficiency, it's important that you stay within that three-minute time limit because potentially today, we could be here for a long time. And if somebody says something that you wanted to say, then you can take a pass on it or just say you agree with them. And then also, I want to mention that today's meeting will end at 5:00. We have another meeting scheduled here, so we won't be able to go beyond 5:00. So if we are, don't be surprised. That's the end of it, right?
Chair, if I could actually comment on that. We originally had expected that the meeting would need to end at 5:00 for a Parks Commission meeting that would need the same room, but that Parks Commission meeting has been canceled, so we no longer have a hard stop at 5:00. So, and also, I would like to mention with public comment, I think we have, it looks like over 100 participants on Zoom right now. So, and as the chair had mentioned, we are expecting a decent amount of public comment on this. There is a court reporter that is on Zoom that is going to be taking this down, but because the court reporter's here, we're going to need to be taking breaks every hour or so for five minutes. And also, the commission is anticipating that there will be a lunch break sometime between 12:00 and 1:30, somewhere in the range of a half an hour. So just so people are aware, for purposes of timing for today's public comment as to how that will play out.
Okay. Now, I was looking around for the court reporter, but I guess we have one, huh?
Yes, correct. She's on Zoom. She already is on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, so, yeah, we'll take the three people here that want to make comments, and then we'll go to Tahoe, and then we'll go to Zoom, and we'll see how it goes after that. You have three minutes, like I mentioned, and, let me see, I might also want to say that, just advise people that, I know there's a lot of varying opinions on this project, but today's meeting is really dealing with the draft environmental impact statement and your review of the draft environmental impact statement. And so the comments you make today on the draft environmental impact statement will be answered to, and it'll be a final, final statement that comes out that provides the staff review and answers to the questions that came up today or the comments. And so at any rate, it's important maybe that you don't necessarily get too much into your opinions, but focus mainly on what the document is saying and what your comments are on the document. Of course, as you've already heard, there's several items in here that are revised based on a court opinion, an appeal court opinion. And so that's really kind of the main thrust of what this is about, but you're welcome to make a comment on any item that you see in the draft environmental impact statement. Let me see, I guess that's about it. So at any rate, unless I'm missing something, nope. Okay, we'll go with the public comment. And so at any rate, let me see, the three people that are here that want to make a public comment, I'll start with you.
Mr. Chair.
Why don't you come forward and give us your name? And remember that you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Cherry Spriggs, and I am here today on behalf of the Placer Business Alliance. For those of you that don't know the Placer Business Alliance, we advocate on behalf of the county's eight largest economic and employment sectors, which are agriculture, forestry, construction, finance, and insurance, healthcare, social assistance, manufacturing, real estate, rental leasing, retail, and tourism. And I mention that because this project touches all of those. From our perspective, we're really excited to get this done. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to the consultants working on this. This is really exciting for our economy, and we're just really excited to get this going. We've missed out on a number of attributes that are in this project, and we just can't wait to see it get started. So thank you so much for having me here today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next?
Next person on the list is Rob Haswell.
Morning, Chairman Johnson and fellow commissioners. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Rob Haswell. I'm the Executive Director of the Placer County Visitors Bureau. I was born and raised in Truckee and currently live at 11075 Oakview Terrace here in Auburn, and I'm here in support of the revised DIR for the village at Palisades Tahoe specific plan. I think, I just kind of want to reiterate what I know has already been talked about a little bit, but when this project was approved in 2016, it was accompanied by an exhaustive 1,700-page environmental document. When it was litigated, the courts upheld the vast majority of the document as valid. The Court of Appeals identified five issues in the DIR that it felt required more study. The court never ruled that the project was killed. It ruled only that some specific elements of the DIR required more analysis. Placer County has since addressed those concerns in the updated revised DIR and resubmitted it, and I believe that's appropriate. As a tourism advocate who also grew up skiing on that great mountain and walking its trails and fishing the streams and rivers around there, I just want to make a couple of comments about the economic-environmental impact of the project. For one, and I do think it's important to reiterate, the majority of this project is infill. It's an infill development, meaning that the construction will be on previously developed land, including parking lots and antiquated structures. At a time in history when the balance between good stewardship of our open spaces and the need for development is critical, proponents of smart growth planning are looking more and more to infill development, whether it serves residents, commercial redevelopment, tourism, or all three. If we accept, oh, fast, if we expect that project is going to occur, especially in our popular destinations, then supporting projects like these is prudent, in my opinion. Also, finally, I want to, and I know I've got just a limited amount of time, but it's important to remember that Lake Tahoe Basin is 100% tourist economy-driven. That's super important, as it's been for decades, as it was when I lived up there. One of the ways that tourism impacts are mitigated is through the collection of the TOT, the Transit Occum C-Tax, and then the recently formed North Tahoe, North Lake Tahoe T-Bid. Last year alone, more than $5 million was collected for the use of programs such as traffic reduction and transportation initiatives, bike lanes, trails, parks and beach access, and more. This project will provide a continued and increased funding stream to these projects, to these two mechanisms. So thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry I speak so long.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have one more?
Yes, Tom Moores is the next commenter.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tom Moores with Sierra Watch. We will submit extensive written comments before that January 30th deadline, but we do appreciate the opportunity to comment today, so thanks for holding this hearing. Sierra Watch has been working for more than 10 years to engage citizen participation in a grassroots effort to defend the mountain values of eastern Placer County, of Lake Tahoe, and the Sierra Nevada. And we're here today to encourage the county with the land use decision-making authority that we've been talking about and hearing about, to play a proactive leadership role in a more collaborative and thorough approach to planning the future of Olympic Valley and the Tahoe Sierra. Because with that authority, as you all know, comes a lot of responsibility, and it's a responsibility to address the real-world issues, some of which we've heard about today, that are facing the mountain communities of Placer County. From the clarity of Lake Tahoe, like we heard about, to the availability of workforce housing, water supplies in Olympic Valley in times of drought, public safety in the event of Where we find ourselves today in this process, though, is an attempt to limit that scope, to constrain assessment to a few narrow interpretations of limited impacts as defined by the Court of Appeals. But Tahoe deserves better. Tahoe deserves a broader approach. We've heard about the hundreds of comment letters that are apparently pouring into the county, which is great. As staff pointed out, I think it indicates success in the county's effort to engage the public, which is great. We see some of those letters, and we know that residents are worried about water supplies. Visitors are scared that they'd be told to shelter in place in the event of wildfire if the roads are too crowded to evacuate. Grandparents are concerned that we're shirking the multi-generational commitment to keep Tahoe blue. And these citizen comments, I think, was alluded to earlier, they don't necessarily fit into the artificially narrow confines of this revised draft DIR, but they do reveal something much, much deeper. How much people love this place? How much people value the mountains of Placer County? And they prove a commitment. We will not squander the epic outdoor Tahoe experience previous generations have left to us on high rises at an indoor water park. And to ignore that place-based passion and that combined commitment to protect it would be a disservice to everyone who lives, works, or plays in Tahoe. I'll wrap up. It would be a disservice to ourselves and to future generations. The good news is that there is a better way. Instead of pursuing another 10 years of conflict, the county could play a leadership role to bring people together in a collaborative planning effort. I think you'd find that there are very few people who could be classified as no-development proponents. People do want to see Olympic Valley revitalized. We just want to see it done in a way that respects the values of our mountains because Tahoe deserves no less. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll make a little transition here, I guess, up to Tahoe. And so if somebody up there is guiding the process up there?
Yes, we have Lori Buffington would like to speak.
And so do we have, how many commenters do we have up there?
Just the one.
Quite a few?
Just the one.
No, just Lori.
Just one commenter?
There.
Yes.
There. The rest are online.
Oh, okay. That's surprising. I thought you would have a full room, but we'll go to the one commenter.
Thank you.
If that person could introduce yourself, your name, and go ahead and give your comment.
My name is Lori Buffington, and I thank you for this opportunity to come on to comment, and I'm happy to follow the presentation by Mr. Moores. After skiing in these mountains starting at a young age with my family, I moved to Tahoe area full-time in 1976, met my husband, and have lived here for the past 47 years full-time. Thirty of those years were in Alpine Meadows, where we raised three children, which gave me extensive experience with ski traffic. We came to these mountains for the skiing, beauty of these mountains, and continue to live here for those reasons and for the incredible community here. As Tom noted, we who live here are passionate about this place, this beauty, and we are determined to protect it. In almost 50 years here, I have felt a dramatic loss in the sense of wild that these mountains and Lake Tahoe area hold. I recently retired after 18 years on the staff of the Tahoe Rim Trail Association, and I'm keenly aware of the increased pressure on our natural and recreational resources here. Areas like Desolation Wilderness, Granite Chief Wilderness, and Shirley and Shirley Canyon are heavily impacted due to overuse. Placer County needs to shift from a focus on bringing more people here to a focus on stewardship of our area and maintaining our beautiful natural surroundings. Over the decades, I've attended many public hearings to various development projects in eastern Placer County. There has almost always been substantial public opposition to these projects, and yet the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors invariably vote to approve development. The original valley expansion project proposed by KSL was for a development of such a large scale as to be completely inappropriate in the Olympic Valley. I was shocked when, after losing the Third District Court of Appeals ruling in July of 2022, that Altera Palisades Tahoe Development Company resubmitted the identical original proposal without making any adjustments to the scale of this project. There has been a serious loss of confidence in the Planning Commission and Placer County Board of Supervisors due to their certification of the original EIR and project approval that was deemed inadequate by the Third District Court of Appeals. Despite the adjustments made to the revised draft EIR, my concerns regarding the scale of the project, impacts on traffic, emergency evacuation, Lake Tahoe air and water quality remain. There are many repercussions of development of this scale that simply cannot be mitigated away. Thank you for the extensive discussion earlier about the existing housing for employees. And I'm glad it was noted that 99 of those existing units will be eliminated.
Your three minutes are up. Could you wrap it up, please?
Certainly. Let me be clear. I'm not opposed to expansion of the village in Olympic Valley, but my hope is that the remaining, that the Placer County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors will only certify and prove a project plan that is appropriate for the valley and for the area in general. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we're going online now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just note at this point, any of the participants online that are wishing to provide public comment, if they would raise their hands so we're aware of their interest in commenting, please. Thank you.
Mike Lukin, if you could unmute, state your name for the record. You can begin making your comments.
Good morning. My name is Mike Lukin with MNJ Advisors Incorporated of Roseville and Tahoe City. I am actually the former Executive Director of the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and a resident of Placer County and of own homes in both South Placer and Tahoe City for over 30 years. I am an avid skier in the North Tahoe area, having skied and experienced traffic impacts at resorts in North Tahoe for the past 40 years. Professionally, I've worked in the fields of transportation and land use planning for 32 years. I've worked closely with Placer County, Placer County Transit, and the North Tahoe Resort Association on transportation issues throughout county. I am very familiar with the traffic issues of Olympic Valley, and I am here today to meet the EIR and its provisions and hot rhetoric of the project. Placer County's transit's long-term TARP service to North Tahoe is critical to reducing congestion throughout the area. It is, hands down, the best transit service in Placer County. It has been transformed in the last few years from a sleepy service around the lake to a vital free service, including connections from Tohoma to Truckee and beyond to Incline Village, and now includes a pilot microtransit project that was actually started in Olympic Valley and is now successfully expanded to the entire North Shore and now to Truckee where it's next to Amtrak. Ridership has increased greatly with these improvements of the last few years. My former employer, PCTPA, Nevada County, Placer County, Washoe County, Caltrans, and Nevada DOT are even now working on the potential expansion of the Capital Forward or Train Service from Roseville to Truckee and Torino with a station potentially in Truckee that would provide train service to the North Shore of Lake Tahoe. Palisades has been committed to paying for expanded transit service as part of their application to include 30-minute headways to Olympic Valley and Palisades, effectively doubling transit service to the area. Without this project, there would be no funding for this service at this time. And transit services around the nation are struggling after the pandemic and don't have the resources that the project will bring. This improved service added to the free transit service and microtransit will get people out of their cars throughout North Tahoe and the Olympic Valley. Without this increased service, just like other areas, transit is not convenient. It will not be successful. There is no roadway alternative that will make people happy with the increased use of the ski resort. But it has been proven in ski resort areas throughout Colorado, Utah, Vermont, Oregon, and British Columbia that increased public transit will work if it is convenient and easy for the user. This project will ensure that it is easy for Palisades, Palisades, and Olympic Valley. The revised environmental impact report, and in particular, Chapter 9 on Traffic Circulation, which is the subject of today's meeting, I feel adequately addresses this issue. Thank you for your time. And that is my presentation.
Okay, well, thank you.
David, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is David Steppner. I am the Chairman of the Olympic Valley MAC. On September 7, 2022, there was a MAC meeting attended by perhaps 50 community members, at which, at which meeting, the County Council, Altera, and members of Placer County CDRA answered questions about the status of the Palisades Village Plan. At this meeting, most of the questions concerned not the specific plan, which Altera said will not change, but rather the EIR and what was the plan for its revision. As has been noted, the comments revolved around the issues of whether there have been substantial environmental changes since the EIR was first developed six years ago and approved. And if there have been such changes, the county cannot limit comments or inputs to just the issues raised by the Court of Appeals. To refresh the committee's memories, the condition of PRC Section 21166 and CCR Section 15162 say that a lead agency shall address, shall not address any other issues outside those specified in the ruling considered in a certified EIR unless substantial evidence demonstrates that new information, which was not or could not have been known with the exercise of reasonable diligence at the time the EIR was certified, shows that new or substantially more severe significant impacts would occur. I emphasize this point. It was the contention of the public attending this MAC meeting that new information is now known, and because of this, substantially severe significant impacts beyond those recorded in 2016 would occur. Highlighted were issues such as wildfire danger and evacuation time, drought conditions and water availability, and effect on Lake Tahoe basic air and water. I am sure in the written comments that you have received, you will be reading a lot about these. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, David.
Hi, Mark, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record, and you can begin making your comments.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to voice my concern. My name is Mark Nemeth. We are full-time residents and homeowners here in the valley. Previously, we're in several other places along the lake. Our kid went to school here in the valley and now in Tahoe City. Myself and my family have been big fans of, been big spending customers of the resort for a while, so thank you for what y'all do. My concern is that the revised EIR does not take into account the massive changes that COVID has brought to Tahoe. 2016 is a lifetime ago in Tahoe time. COVID changed everything. There weren't many folks driving, working from home back then. Now there is a whole new population of them, families with kids, multiple cars, driving for groceries, school activities, stores, doctors, God forbid, hospitals or emergency evacuations. Our roads have not changed, but there are now a ton more cars and far more traffic. I'm very concerned about being able to get my kid to a doctor if needed, let alone community evacuations in case of an emergency. Bad traffic is more than nuisance. It could be life or death. I do not believe that mitigation measures have addressed these concerns, and I do urge the committee to please take a look at this. Traffic and evacuation in light of the large population increase to Tahoe in general and subsequently to the valley. Back to the valley, excuse me. Thank you kindly for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, Cheryl, please unmute, state your name for the record, and begin making your comments.
Hi, thank you. Cheryl Burkema, West Placer County. What I wanted to bring up as a concern was the programmatic policy document. I'd like to use Sunset Area Plan in western Placer as an example of what happens when you have wiggly documents that can move in the future. Sunset Area Plan was required to pay. The air quality was so bad for this project, which is like 800,000 trips a day. Roseville already is the fifth worst air quality in the nation, according to the American Cancer Society. I would hate to see that happen to Tahoe. What happened was they pay a one-time fee, and then every project that comes on afterwards exceeds that. An example, Harvana. They allowed 70,000 vehicles a year and just used for mitigation the 850 employees' trips a day. Placer County has allowed the special interests to come in past these projects. And so what happens is no one is watching the cumulative impacts of the entire area. Projects come back. The specific plans come back year after year and change densities, move things around. The projects become unrecognizable. No one is watching that. I can tell you that from what's happened on West Placer County, and I would predict the same thing will happen to Tahoe. I would hope that there would be some maximums and definitions constraints put in that project where it's not allowed. Also, I'd like to thank Tom Moore and the speakers that have mentioned the leadership that could be because it hasn't been available to us in other times. Also, if you look at the EPA, the U.S. EPA for Lake Tahoe, since 1968, it has gone down from 100 feet of clarity to 60 something. Well, why would we even consider building something until we can get that under control? It's moving in the wrong direction, and there, yet we're going to add additional greenhouse gas emissions, water quality issues. There have been 80 different agencies and $2.5 billion spent trying to solve this problem. And a special interest is going to be allowed to come in and exacerbate that without having a plan in place to make sure that that is corrected. 15 million visitors a year come to Tahoe. Where are the number, as the previous speaker said, the numbers of people that are going to be in that area with a project like this? I don't think the measurements have been there. They should be in the EIR. There should be some demographics assessed and additional populations expected, along with a response to California emissions on what is the 2030, 2045? There's multiple targets that the state has set out, and they should meet that.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay, in closing, I would like to say there are multiple counties that surround Tahoe and multiple city jurisdictions. I think that they should have a seat at the table because they also are responsible for Lake Tahoe. In addition, maybe the residents should start working with the U.S. EPA if the local government doesn't seem to be able to manage a lot of the impacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sophia, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Great, thank you so much. Good morning, Placer County Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the partially revised draft environmental impact report for the Village at Palisades Tahoe specific plan. My name is Sophia Heidrick, and I am the Advocacy Director for Mountain Area Preservation. I want to use my three minutes today to discuss some of the inadequacies I see with the information provided in the revised draft environmental impact report. We will be submitting a detailed comment letter prior to the deadline on the 30th, but here are a few highlights for you to consider. First, it is disappointing that the applicant, ascent, and the county have chosen to take the narrowest view possible of the course of termination rather than incorporating directly relevant new information and data and adequately considering the altered baseline conditions. This document pretends that we're still in 2015 and that very little has changed. That simply is not the case. There have been vast changes since the EIR was certified in 2016, creating new or substantially more severe environmental impacts. We have updated information about climate change and how it exacerbates wildfire impacts. We also have the experience of several recent California wildfires under our belts. And while sometimes there is advanced noticing and slot cameras allowing for evacuation of threatened areas, sometimes there isn't. Wildfires are no longer as predictable as they once were, as evidenced in Paradise, another place with one way in and no way out. This document mischaracterizes current fire conditions and relies heavily upon the outdated testimony at the former fire chief. We also have new information about drought and its relationship to aquifer drawdown and water availability, an impact that wasn't sufficiently analyzed in the original EIR. And we have new conditions related to an increase in regional population and traffic, which should be considered in the context of cumulative impacts. Further, the TRPA adopted a new vehicle miles traveled threshold standard in 2021. The revised EIR analyzes VMT under the old TRPA threshold. This is an inadequate analysis under CEQA, especially given that the specific plan will adversely impact TRPA's ability to attain the new VMT threshold standard. Those impacts must be addressed and properly mitigated. In regard to Lake Tahoe water quality, the revised EIR takes a very strange and inadequate approach. It alleges that there is no direct link between VMT and fine sediment input into the lake when the TRPA and the best available science have found the opposite to be true. Instead of making this flawed argument, the revised EIR should have considered how the specific plan would impact the ability of the TRPA to meet and attain its current threshold standards and provide appropriate associated mitigation. Overall, we do not believe that the revised EIR meets the requirements of CEQA. We had also hoped, after years of litigation and controversy, that this time could have been spent listening to the community to come up with an approach that would not only meet Altera's bottom line and goals, but also result in a project that does not degrade Olympic Valley or the region, improves public safety and health, and supports the community. We are still hopeful that this can happen. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment.
Hey, thank you.
Hi, Bronwyn, if you could unmute, state your name for the record and begin making your comments. Alexis, if you can please unmute, state your name for the record and then begin making your comments.
Good afternoon, Placer County Planning Commissioners. My name is Alexis Aller, the Executive Director of Mountain Area Preservation. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide comments on the Village at Palisades Tahoe specific plan. MAP is a 35-year environmental advocacy organization with a deep care and commitment to the entire Truckee Tahoe region, the community, our visitors, our special natural resources, wildlife, mountain peaks, and our character. As stewards of Olympic Valley, we are deeply concerned with the quality of the revised draft EIR and the response by Altera to the significant threats posed by the specific plan. MAP has been a community stakeholder participating in the public process since the project's inception. Before Altera, we spent many years with the previous applicant reiterating the need for redevelopment and how to work with the community on a blueprint for Palisades, not against the community. Let's create Let's create community benefits, let's create buy-in, not opposition. A community-supported project is one where the benefits outweigh the impacts, not simply stating the impacts are significant and unavoidable. An example of this would be the applicant planning for diverse workforce housing while also fulfilling the actual Placer County workforce housing requirement. A reduced project scale to reduce the overall threats to traffic congestion, increased VMTs to the basin, and the added wildfire danger with increased year-round transit-dependent tourism. There has to be a better way to redevelop the resort and foster a working relationship with the community, which is Palisades' number-one customer. Today, you're going to hear from passionate conservationists and customers of Palisades asking the applicant to take a step back on the proposal and ask the commission to reject the revised draft EIR as it continues to ignore the need to analyze new data and analysis to mitigate the impacts caused by the proposal. The revised draft EIR needs science-backed data, not opinions, to help inform permanent decisions created through land use entitlements and future development. MAP is respectfully requesting the county revise and recirculate the revised draft EIR. There is new data on fire hazards, drought, and population changes with COVID. The revised draft EIR does not create meaningful mitigation measures to reduce the overall impacts caused by the project, specifically speaking to the fire hazards, the VMTs to Lake Tahoe, noise impacts through 25 years of construction, and of course, the cumulative impacts. The project is not an isolated bubble. The impacts will leak out of Olympic Valley and threaten public safety of residents and visitors in the greater Truckee-Tahoe region. Commissioners, please remember Olympic Valley is a box canyon in a very constrained area of North Lake Tahoe and Truckee, with limited infrastructure to serve the valley with one way in and potentially no way out in the event of a wildfire. Altera needs to recognize its role in fostering a project that respects public safety with future redevelopment and community benefits. We see this as a great opportunity to work with the community, conservationists, and the county on a new blueprint that can be supported by Truckee-Tahoe residents who are truly your number-one fan and customer. Thank you again for taking our public comments into consideration, and we will be planning to follow up with a letter by January 30th.
Thank you.
Friends of the Olympic Valley, if you could unmute, please state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Are you hearing me okay?
Yes.
Hey, hello, thank you for taking my comments. My name's Ed Hennevald, I'm a full-time Olympic Valley resident. I was a New York doctor in Truckee since 1978. I raised my family here and want to protect what is being threatened. I've served on the local Squaw Valley MAC committees for over 20 years. I've been chairman of the Friends of Squaw Creek since its inception in 2002. I'm not speaking for that board, but I am an advocate for our creek and an individual that's very concerned about this development as proposed. In that vein of watershed stewardship, I wish to have you examine more closely the water dynamics in our valley. California is now in a four-year drought that not only increases the risk of controlling wildfires, but is putting our entire drinking water supply at risk. Climate change has fundamentally altered our state's hydrologic system, intensified extreme weather, and is leading to longer and drier periods. The aquifer in Olympic Valley is in the western portion, and it's the main source of our potable water, but it's quite shallow, only 18 feet deep. Because of climate change, higher temperatures, and reduced snowpack, which leads to more rain and snow than in the past, we will be at increased risk of water shortage earlier in the season and be most depleted by late summer, early fall, which is of course our peak wildfire season. Specifically, I'm concerned now that this rescinded EIR used a water supply assessment based on the time period 2012 to 2014. While speculative at best, it does not include our most recent drought years 2016 to 2022, which better reflect the current state of climate change and understanding. Further, the 2015 WSA looked only backward at historical use of and demand for water. Since that study was done, California law SB 1262 has changed to allow the assessment of future climate change effects in determining water supply and considering rising temperatures and possibly more drought conditions than in the past. Both the Olympic Valley Public Service District and Placer County should require an updated WSA with this additional forward-looking analysis. Another quick comment, because it is just one aquifer, we have no redundant supply. The prior EIR suggested that the PSD was actively searching for such an alternative water supply. That search proved unsuccessful and represents a change from the original EIR. And finally, the mountain adventure camp. We really need to know more about what would be going in there because it's consumptive water use, and they're estimating in the prior EIR 240,000 gallons per year, but we don't know what's going in that. If there's some way of disclosing that, maybe in our later conversations with respect to merits, but that is indeed a big threat to many in the valley. My final thought is, is Olympic Valley a resort, or is it a community? Or both? Please represent us all, and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Hi Ben, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Greetings, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Dr. Benjamin Hatchett, and I've dedicated my scientific career to studying mountain systems in the past, present, and future, largely in California, Sierra Nevada, and largely thanks to the inspiration provided by over 25 years of living and recreating here on snow, rock, trails, and water. Broadly, I appreciate the revisions provided to the EIR and have one primary comment in light of unprecedented and surprising change in our mountains, which pertains to wildfire. In particular, the extreme fire behavior and rates of spread in the past five years have challenged our assumptions about what constitutes safe regions to shelter in place and the durations of time that are reasonable for egress during wildfire approach. I'm concerned with the modeling performed in Section 15, that it fails to estimate the probabilities of a burnover event, which would likely result in fatalities and injuries, as well as negative mental health impacts during an evacuation if visitors and residents are sitting in their cars for between 2.9 hours, current estimate, and upwards of 11 hours during their egress. Sheltering in place in the parking lot, on the road, or at the golf course exposes the public to a potential, if not likely, burnover event. They are unprepared with proper PPE or knowledge to handle this type of event. Given the rates of spread and the ember cast from extreme wildfires that we've exposed and experienced during the past five years since the EIR was performed, providing accurate information about how this product, project, would increase the likelihood of such a burnover event is critical. To that point, I also find former Chief Banson's thoughts insightful, but potentially out of date as they were written in 2016, given the modern era of wildfire we live in, with many career firefighters noting how fire behavior is now like nothing they've ever seen before. Fuels, topography, and weather all work against us at larger spatial scales than previously assumed, and we are now living in a very, very, very unlikely situation with respect to potentially extreme fire growth that can easily overwhelm suppression resources. My recommendation is to perform additional coupled human mobility and wildfire modeling exercises and undergo peer review to more realistically estimate the chances of this kind of potential burnover event taking place during a mass egress during wildfire, such as these impacts can be quantified in the future EIR. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi Bronwyn, can you please unmute your mic, state your name for the record, and begin making your comments?
Hi, yes, my name is Bronwyn Huddelson, and I am a Truckee resident. And I just wanted to briefly comment as a full-time resident here and someone who works at the Palisades Mountain, that this mountain and this area is about the culture of living in the beauty and the majesty of these natural features, the mountains and the rivers and the lake. And I find that many of the revised additions don't actually, they don't actually address what would happen to the culture of this area when things start to change and people are coming here not for the mountains, but for the water park. People are coming here not to be outside, but to be inside. And I think although there were some notes here on the trip emission reduction measures, I think there are some great resolutions with providing free bicycles to tourists. But I also think that a lot of this is already in place as far as providing the free shuttle service around the lake through Truckee and down to North Lake. That is already in effect, and it is used a lot, and it still has not mitigated the traffic and the impact from the traffic and all of the people coming to the area already, who I believe come here for the beauty of it. They come here to experience the outdoors. And I think overall, this proposal is going against that entirely, and we are inviting people to drive, to travel here, and people will still drive their own cars because in this day and age, everybody likes the freedom of being able to go where they want to go at any given moment. I don't think that providing more shuttles is necessarily going to have a significant change in the traffic and the pollution that it causes. But I do think that if the proposal were to be more dedicated to the culture of the mountains and how to get more tourists to visit the area, to be outside, and to protect the land, to be stewards of the land, rather than to take advantage and spend their time indoors bowling or swimming at a pool, I just, I think the impact is far greater than what is noted here, and is much longer term than even the 25 years that they say it will take. And I am truly concerned, and as a resident, as somebody who moved here to enjoy the outdoor area that is here.
So Bronwyn, could you wrap it up? Your three minutes are up.
Absolutely. Yes, in conclusion, I think there should be greater proposal for mitigating the pollution of the tourists that we are trying to get even more of coming to this area and focus more on protecting the culture and inviting people to experience the culture and the outdoors that we have in this beautiful area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi Sheri, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sharon Freeman. I am a resident of Truckee. I've been here for 24 years, got two kids here in the school district. And my first comment has to do with the lack of comment from the Tahoe contingent in person here. I'm looking outside right now, it is a bluebird powder day, and if you're not working or at home taking care of your kids, you are out in the mountains enjoying skiing and being in the powder. So to have this meeting and wonder why there aren't 100 people in Tahoe waiting to comment, it's because we're all outside enjoying this beautiful jewel of a resource that we have. I have seen, just in the past few years, an incredible influx of people coming here. I've been here long enough to see the increase of traffic and population and tourism, but what we've seen since the pandemic is just extraordinary. And for me, I look at it and say, for us to make any of these decisions based on pre-pandemic analyses or numbers is irresponsible. We know that the whole economy in the world has changed, and for us to base the next 25 years of environmental impact and the degradation of our community, and the threats to wildfire evacuation and drought, and we live here, we see it every day, you go to get to work and you can't even get on the road. The traffic is backed up, no one's moving anywhere, and that has nothing to do with the fire. That's just everybody trying to get to work or trying to go play, and our roads are clogged with newcomers. To say that our economy is 100% based on tourism is just not true anymore. We have a strong and vibrant transplant economy, all the people who used to visit but now live here and telecommute, and they're raising their families here. And we really need to look at who our community members are now, post-pandemic, and what that's going to look like for the next 25 years, and not just base it on these stale numbers that don't apply anymore. I agree with the last commenter talking about the indoor water park and those features. We don't need an artificial amusement park, but we have this incredible, God-given amusement park around us. And the degradation of this community and the people who have invested their lives here to maintain and keep this place beautiful and functioning, you're basically looking at blowing all of that out just to bring in more money, whereas, you know, our county makes so much money off of this beautiful place, and we can all work together to continue utilizing this as the beautiful resource while still protecting it as this incredible jewel that we have. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Martha, if you could unmute your mic and state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Hi, thank you for calling on me. My name is Martha Sellers, and we live part-time, one valley south of the proposed development. We live in Bear Creek in Walpine Meadows Valley, and love it there and will soon be full-time. I just want to keep it brief, I just want to concur with those that say things have changed pretty dramatically since COVID, the patterns of life and who lives there, and the density and people full-time rather than coming up to visit. And the other piece is how much the wildfire situation and our understanding of it and the water have changed in the last five years, and the need, I think, to look at that seriously in an updated EIR. Lastly, I think that the smart development is one that takes into account the incredible value and beauty and assets of the place, and I would hope that the commission would support a process that leads to development workforce housing, terrific, but if we add so many more houses that the workforce demand for restaurant people, et cetera, is 10 times what the housing is, we have, we've kind of ended up net behind on workforce housing. So I hope that we'll look at the assets, the outdoor beauty, rather than the idea of a water park and artificial indoor places. Love those kinds of things, I've had kids too, and you know, that's why we love the Sacramento Valley for the heat and the places you might go off to water parks. So I think that development is going to happen, and I think locals support that, but it should be consistent with the assets. It shouldn't waste the assets and the value and the beauty that exists. So thank you for letting me join in the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Laura, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Hi, thank you. My name is Laura Norman, and I am a homeowner also at Alpine Meadows, just one valley away, where we are also transitioning to be full-time residents. My primary concern, and we have been homeowners in Alpine for 25 years, I should say as well. My primary concern with this development is, are two things. One is I agree with all the previous speakers about, and particularly Bronwyn, with what is the nature of how we develop and what kind of future do you see when you're developing to bring people up to a beautiful outdoor place who primarily want to be inside? But the thing that I would like to speak most about is water. In the 25 years that we have been at Alpine Meadows, we have really seen very increased impact of climate change accelerating over the past five or six. So if you walk around these valleys or the valleys of Lake Tahoe, you can see that almost half of the trees are dying in a lot of places. And so the threat of catastrophic fire is much greater than it was in 2016. So I worry about my ability to get out of the area in the case of a catastrophic fire, or for my friends at Squaw Valley to be able to get there. Or for uh, my friends at Squaw Valley to be able to get there, get out there and for Cal Fire folks to be able to get in. Um, and that's something that I worry about already um, in advance of this huge development project. Um, but we also worry quite a bit about water availability. Um, so if this proposed development is consuming, you know, close to 80,000 gallons of water annually, where's that water going to come from? And um, is there some commitment that um, from the water district that they're going to provide that water while still giving water to um, the residents that are already there? Um, and I think given the fact that our trees are dying, um, the idea of diverting a significant amount of water for a water park is astonishingly selfish and short-sighted in the current environment. Um, so um, those are the main things that, that I'd like to, to um, bring up that are important to me. So I think there could be a more safe and reasonable proposal that's worked on in collaboration with uh, the local community and the residents. So um, thank you for your attention and for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine, if you could unmute your mic, uh, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
There it is. Oh, sorry. Thank you um, for the opportunity to speak. I uh, agree with most of the individuals. For the record, my name is Catherine Shiyamoto. We've um, had a secondary um, home in the Olympic Valley for over 25 years. I've stayed and grew up in the Tahoe area on weekends uh, since I was four. I do support further development and improvement of the area, but am concerned with the mitigation um, that were listed and the feasibility of actually um, having an effective evacuation, even if it was managed by um, the police or fire department helping people exit. The, currently, the regular traffic in and out of Olympic Valley, Valley can take hours to get to um, Tahoe um, city or uh, Truckee. And I don't feel that that part of the ERA has been adequately mitigated. And I also agree with a lot of the other um, points that people have made. The impact to the area for the water, for the activities. And specifically for us, we really support the East parcel and housing, but not to the scale that it's being developed because it will negatively impact where we currently live, which is across the street from it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Seth, if you could please unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Hi, my name is Seth Howard. Uh, I'm a field rep in Northern California Carpenter Union. Hey, I just want to point out something. I hear a lot of people talking about the issue with fire up here in the basin and leaving Olympic Valley, which I totally understand, but in reality, Olympic Valley gets, I don't know, 90% of their traffic in the wintertime when we usually don't have a fire issue. I understand it is a real issue, but I just want to point that out that in the summers, it's pretty quiet in Olympic Valley. And I get it, there are a lot of people still up there, but nothing like in the winter. It's not going to take you two hours to leave uh, Olympic Valley in the summertime. Thank you. That's all I wanted to point out. And the wintertime and summertime, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Fabian, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record and you can begin making your comments.
I apologize. I don't intend to speak.
Hi Ally, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Hey, my name is Ally. This is in direct response to the previous commenter. Uh, I believe that the water park would be a summer activity. Therefore, the amount of people in the summer would be increased.
We'll take a break after this one.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
There's no one else.
Okay, I think, take a break now?
Yeah, and there's no one else.
No, no, we can close. You can close.
Oh, okay.
There's no more public.
Okay, I guess we have no more public comment. And so we'll uh, I guess at this point, we'll take a little break.
Yes, sir.
Let the court reporter take five or so and then we'll, we'll wrap it up. I guess if we don't have more public comment.
Are we going to take lunch or?
The commission can certainly take a five-minute break or they can take lunch if they prefer right now. It's up to you.
Want to take a break? I mean, take lunch? Okay, we'll go ahead and take lunch now and then we'll meet again in a half an hour or so. 12:30?
Yeah, 12:30.
Turn at 12:30?
Yes.
Okay, well, we took a lunch break, but it looks like there still may be several people that are online. And so our, our public hearing is still open. And so if anybody would like to raise their hand and uh, make a comment, they're sure welcome to do that right now.
Hi Paul and Laura, if you could unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Laura Miller. I'm a full-time resident of Homewood over on the west shore of Lake Tahoe. I'm wanting to comment that I reject the revised draft environment impact report. I have concerns about what has changed since the pandemic. And I don't think those changes um, are being reflected in the report. I'm concerned about traffic. Um, just last week and over Christmas break, it took over two hours to get between Truckee and Tahoe City. And I can't imagine what the increase in um, visitors to the valley will um, bring as far as traffic goes. Um, I'm concerned about the air quality, the water quality and the water supply. You're realigning a creek and how that isn't something that isn't going to affect um, those qualities and supplies. It just baffles me. Um, I'm concerned about the wildlife or wildfire evacuation. Um, I think we all remember the images of South Lake Tahoe and the Calder Fire. And I think since um, the original plan of 2016, I think a lot has changed as far as how our government is looking at wildfires and evacuations and the conditions and limits that go along with that. And I don't think the plan looks at those new goals that our government has as far as wildfire evacuation goes. I'm concerned about noise. I think noise is going to be something that comes with this project. And um, I just feel so terrible for the folks that are residents of the valley. Um, I know that when the resort at Squaw Creek built, was built in the eighties, the valley went from peaceful to really quiet loud. I think the plan's reckless. I think moving the mountain operations from over on the mountain to the other side of the creek that you, you've wanting to, you're wanting to realign, that's just going to add heavy equipment like the snow cats and snowmobiles. Those are the guys that operate the mountain. And if you guys are operating a ski resort that way and that's your plan, I think it's quite reckless. And it, and I think the idea of installing a water park is reckless. And I don't think you're looking at it as a benefit for our community. It's a benefit to make it like Vale. And this isn't going to be Vale. Please reconsider approving this poor plan. Thank you so much for your time, folks.
Okay, thank you.
No more raised hands.
No more. Well, we still see several people that are listening. If there's somebody else that would like to make a comment, you're sure welcome to do it, but you need to raise your hand.
Hi Bob, if you could unmute your mic and state your name for the record and begin making your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is uh, Bob Barnett. I'm a full-time resident of Olympic Valley, have been for many years. I'm a retired attorney uh, and my public service includes uh, having been on the board directors of the uh, Olympic Valley Mutual Water Company. I'm on the design review committee and uh, I'm a director of the Tahoe Forest Hospital District. And I really care about this community. Not only because I live here, but because a lot of people that I know work on the mountain. And uh, I, I love so many of the Altera people, so this is nothing against them. But I want to advocate for further study of the current wildfire impacts. Uh, you know, I am respectful of the process, but there is substantial evidence that demonstrates that there is new information that wasn't known when the EIR was certified. And, and it does show significantly more severe impacts would occur. So what we knew in 2015 and 2016, you know, Chief Manson thought like the rest of us that wildfire could not cross the summit to reach our valley. And we thought wildfire could be stopped in the forest before reaching our valley. So that's what we believed and that's what was reflected in the uh, EIR and the revised EIR has not dealt with that subject. But here's what's changed. There's been a tipping point that's been reached in our Sierra forests where drought and overgrowth and dead trees have produced not wildfire, but firestorms. And the evidence of that uh, is the Calder and the Dixie fires, which crossed the summit. And they could not be stopped in the forest. They burned from west to east, as you all know, uh, until they ran out of fuel. This is a totally different environment and it's a very scary one. Uh, there, there is a scientific study of Olympic Valley's vulnerability that was finished in uh, 2022 called the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. It's very detailed. Um, and if you haven't read it, it's something that I think you would find very valuable and would help you understand this problem. And I, I'm not going to go through all of it, but I just want to share what uh, Zeke Lunder told us at the meeting in which he presented his plan to the Public Service District uh, last August. Zeke Lunder, if you don't know, is a guy who works for Cal Fire and he does the LiDAR studies uh, in advance of fires like the Calder Fire and the Dixie Fire to see what the fuels are and see what the firefighters are going to face. And he's been through all of the uh, big disaster fires here in the last 20 years. And, and this is what he told us. He said, "There will likely be a catastrophic firestorm that will be unstoppable until it reaches Olympic Valley. It will most likely be in the fall when the water table's at its lowest point, the forest's at its driest and it will be driven by high winds. The valley will be showered with burning embers that will move one to two miles ahead of the firestorm. Whether any structures can be saved will depend on whether there's enough water supply and firefighters to put out multiple and recurring fires."
Could you wrap it up?
Yeah. So what I'm telling you is, is that things have significantly changed that uh, are, could wipe out our valley. And so I submit that there is evidence of changed circumstances to warrant, including an updated study of the severe impacts of this current explosive wildfire vulnerability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Miami, can you unmute your mic, state your name for the record and begin making your comment?
Yes, Court Reporter, thank you. My name is Miami Peacock and I'm the publisher-owner of Moonshine Inc. And I appreciate technology for allowing all of us to connect like this for this planning commission meeting. I just had a quick follow-up question. Um, earlier on, the senior planner with Clauston County, Patrick Dobbs, I believe he said that there will be a time later for the planning commission to speak to the project itself and not just on the revised EIR. And I was wondering if you guys could comment on that, see if I heard that correctly. And if so, when is that later time going to be?
Well, I'll give you, as a chairman, I'll give you my view and then we'll let the staff, if they want to correct it a little bit. But basically, this, this meeting today is just addressing the environment, draft environmental environmental uh, impact statement or report, excuse me. And, and so it's pretty much focused on that. We're not making any decisions today. It, it will, all the comments that are made today in the letters that are sent and the issues that are brought up will be addressed in the final document, which will be at a later date. And at that time, uh, there will be consideration on the merits of the project and as well as the draft, the doc, the final document. And uh, the commission will have, will be in a position then to make a, a decision to forward it on to the board of supervisors. Does that answer your question?
Thank you Chairman Johnson. Um, well, it does, but is that saying that after all of the comments have been collected on the revised EIR, it's coming back to the planning commission at that point? The community and others will be able to comment on the specific plan itself?
Mr. Chair.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. It'll be a, it'll be another public hearing and the community will be fully able to address the whole project.
Mr. Chair, if you like, I can add just a little bit to that.
Okay, go ahead.
We don't have specific timing for when the entitlement hearings will commence. Obviously, we've got to get through the current process of this revised uh, draft EIR comment period, which closes on January 30th. And then after that, there will be a period of time where the county staff and consultation with the environmental consultant will need to evaluate the volume of comments and just in terms of how much effort it will take to respond, but also to evaluate those comments for whether or not there are additional supplemental analyses or issues that will have to be addressed. So uh, probably around the end of February, we should have a pretty good idea of the approximate timing. For right now, I would say it is likely to occur at some point in the summer of 2023. So I think we can just kind of reserve that space.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much Chairman.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's his. Well, yeah, we'll go ahead. Normally we don't, but we will in this case.
Chair, I would just suggest if we do allow this one, you would also need to allow any other people that have commented to provide it.
Yeah, everybody then can.
Hi friends at the Olympic Valley, if you could unmute your mic and begin making your comments. Also, please state your name for the record.
Uh, this is Ed Hendelwell again, so I'm sorry uh, uh, if I'm not allowed to speak a second time, but I just want to make the comment that we note that we don't have a fifth district representative at this most important meeting. And I'm hoping that gets remedied quickly as we want local representation on this big decision of our next 25 years possibly. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I am your local representative. I am here today.
Whoa, when did that happen? Okay, well, we didn't allow one second comment. If there's somebody else that wants to make a second comment, they can.
No.
Okay, are we through?
So just to make sure before we close public comment, if there was anybody that commented already on this that wished to provide further comment, that opportunity is available.
Okay, well, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the staff. But I also want to let the applicant, if they have any follow-up comments that they'd like to make.
Would you have your mic set on?
Whitmanley, on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions of us, we'd be happy to address them at this meeting, at future meetings. But with that, we send things back to the commission.
Okay, thank you. Well, if you have questions right now, you can ask them, but you can think about it, and we can, we can ask later. Do you have any follow-up you want to make right now?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't. Alex, is there something you?
So to the extent that the planning commission themselves or planning commissioners have questions about any of the comments or issues that have been raised today that you would like to address further or have staff address further, we are available to address those issues. And as I mentioned earlier, Patrick mentioned, we do have our environmental consultant present. So if there are questions from the commission, we can take those, those questions.
Okay. So when we're back to the commission, so if any commissioners have a question, you're sure.
I have a question. I noticed it came up a lot, and I was told that this was not there. Can somebody clarify what a water park is, or if there is a water park that I've been told is not a water park and is a water park?
Sure.
So in public, can we get clarification on that, please?
Sure, I'll go ahead and address that. So the Mountain Adventure Center, or Mountain Adventure Camp, as it's alternatively referred to, is an indoor recreation center that has a broad base of programming that includes a lot of things that could potentially go in there. Patrick listed some of those, including bowling alley, movie theater, multi-generational arcade. These are après-ski or ski alternative type of uses for, you know, somebody who might be visiting with family members who either you have small children, and maybe you're not out on the slopes, or if it's bad weather day, or that there are just ski alternatives. And also, you know, alternative ski season opportunities for recreation there within the village. It does include a substantial amount of potential programming for wet amenities. To the extent that I heard comments today about the amount and volume of water not being analyzed as part of the water supply assessment, it was. The water supply assessment, you know, looked at not only the, the demands for the project itself, but included an element of conservation, about 11% system loss that you would account for. And included in all of those demands was the water park as the total volume of water that would be necessary to serve the project on an annualized basis. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so it's more of an indoor recreational. It's not a considered water park like we have in Placer County in Roseville.
It is an entirely indoor facility within a building, and certainly, you know, there could be similar types of facilities, whether those are pools, action rivers, slides, combination of those things, rock climbing walls that potentially have pools as a, an area to fall into. I mean, there, yes, there are those things.
And the water consideration is park, bathrooms, restrooms, water, hand washing facilities, that's all included in this water.
Ever, yes.
Project.
Yes, all of the, the totality of the, the demands to fill the facilities plus operate.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners?
Just comments.
Yeah.
Thank you for a thorough report. And as stated early by county council, this is the time for the community to take a look at the revised draft EIR, and I appreciate all the efforts and time and effort that were put into it, and look forward to a report later on in February, when you, late February, when you bring it back to us. Thank you very much.
And just, just to clarify, so the final EIR preparation, we don't know what period of time that will take. Once that final EIR is prepared and is made public, that would be the time when we would be coming back to present the entirety of the project. So that would be the entitlement package and the findings of the final EIR. That's probably going to occur in summer at some point.
And first, hopefully, it's in a time of the year where we get to have it up in the eastern slope.
Agree.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Clarification, I know that you respond to written comments. People that spoke today, how might they find a response to their concerns that were orally expressed?
As, as Clayton mentioned earlier, we do have a court reporter that is taking down all comments and a direct transcript of those comments. Those will be provided to dissent with each person's name, and they will be listed out in the final EIR in the same manner that any written comments that are submitted and responded to in the same manner as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. One, I have just one question and then two suggestions for dissent. So this is kind of a staff question, I suppose, and that is, there were several comments made, really more than several, about the idea that, you know, this, the scope of this draft EIR supplement or whatever is inadequate, and that we need to relook because the 2016 court EIR, you know, is now dated. So, and then actually, the Mac Chair from Olympic Valley brought this up, and then it was subsequently emphasized as well, and that is, you know, if there is a substantial evidence of change, et cetera, some, actually, many of the speakers indicated that they felt there was. So at some point in this process, we made a decision as, I guess, a county staff, that there was not substantial difference. There was not substantial change, and that we could just kind of refer to this document and those items associated with the appellate court decision, period. How did that process unfold?
So let me go back a little bit to answer your question, because this really comes down to, what you're asking about essentially is a question about forecasting in the cumulative setting. And for all EIR-level projects, whether it's project level or program level, you have to forecast. And so there's two ways that that happens, and it's becomes, you know, I think, a little bit more relevant in the context of a programmatic EIR for a project that might build out over a long period of time. And that is looking at area plans of not only the jurisdiction that is processing the EIR, but the surrounding jurisdictions and what their plans are for growth, what the holding capacity of their plans are, what other major projects that are known or reasonably foreseeable at that time that would get pulled into the cumulative. And so we do have a very extensive cumulative project list that pulls in other projects regionally within that area, within about a 20-mile radius, including in the Tahoe Basin, Towne-Arucki. And then the third part of that is, and this is something that I, I think I touched on a little bit in the correspondence with you earlier this week, is the county staff actually went, in terms of the Olympic Valley, and, and did a capacity analysis based on the available lands that are within that community that are undeveloped or underdeveloped, based on their existing zoning designations, took a 30-year rearview look at the levels of development based on building permits and water connections, and then forecasted that forward with a 30% inflation, and then, you know, analyzed that in the context of whether or not that capacity even existed in the valley to, you know, make it a realistic forecast. We did do that. And so in terms of, again, the context of have we accounted for regional growth and other things that would happen contemporaneous with this project, to the extent that we can within terms of what is a logical decision-making process, where we can say this is a reasonable thing to, to look at, yes, we have done. Did that get at your question?
Yeah, to some degree. I guess I, you know, when you think back to some of the comments that were made, they talked about the change in climate, and obviously, we've had some major fire events since 2016 in the, not in the Olympic Valley, but in that area. And then the consequences of COVID, which apparently have driven more to the area and that sort of thing. So the real, the real question is that the staff made a decision that this was adequate to go forward to the Board of Supervisors downstream for certification, along with the core document that existed in 2016. And, and so, and we have citizens who are saying that that is not a, a good approach.
So in terms of, you know, here's, I'll provide the part B, if you will. In terms of the scope of this revised draft EIR effort, Patrick touched on it in his presentation, it is specifically those items that were identified by the appellate court decision as deficiencies with the document. Moving forward, there are areas of the project analysis that while they also have a place in the EIR analysis, are very important from a policy perspective, and whether the, the lead agency, Placer County in this case, is evaluating all of the potential issues and impacts, the project, in terms of a policy perspective on what the requirements of that project are. So in terms of things that we heard today, I do anticipate that there will be further discussion of those issues and further coordination with our other responsible agency partners, including, you know, fire and EMS and sheriff, to evaluate those evacuation procedures and ensure that we have done our, our, our full, full scope of work that we need to do to be prepared.
Okay, that's, that's a great answer. So that leads me to two, two questions or two points for dissent, two suggestions, I suppose. The first is segueing off of what, what Alex just went through. I think that portion of the document is lacking a bit. In other words, basically what we say is, we've decided to do this. This document stands alone, and there is no need for further discussion. It's pretty evident, I think, that there is need for further discussion. You should probably explain the process that was used to, to conclude that this document should stand alone. And then where it makes sense to do further analysis, as Alex just discussed, you should probably point out in the document that we have, in fact, listened to people and that we have done further analysis, and it's located at this point or whatever, so that people understand why we believe that this document is essentially a standalone document, but we did listen as well, and we decided to do a little bit further analysis. The second suggestion for dissent is, deals with housing. It's, it was confusing to me, but I got great clarification, by, by the way, from Alex and staff on this. It was confusing to me when you discussed, and having now looked at it again, you refer to the east portion of this, you know, project in here, and you talk about workforce housing in 300, up to 300. So we get very granular in the discussion prior to that. I mean, it's down to the square foot, et cetera, et cetera. And then we say, by the way, with workforce housing, we're going to put that in east, in the east area, and it's going to be up to 300. Well, that's 250, it's 150, it's 50, it's whatever it is. But in fact, there is a lot of granularity, and I just kind of went through it early on. I would suggest that you take that whole housing area, workforce housing area, and discuss it in a little more detail so that we understand not only what the proposal is, but also all of the subsequent mitigation in here about vehicle miles traveled, et cetera. You know, there's assumptions that go along with that, and a, and a lot of them are actually tied to workforce housing, because that involves transit back and forth on a routine, even daily basis in many cases. And if you can reduce that, then that actually makes the assessments that you followed on with with regards to pollution and, and, and all of that, a little bit easier to understand, and maybe even more favorable, not that I'm advocating one way or the other, but maybe even a more favorable, I guess, better way to say it would be a more clear way of describing the project in, in the EIR and what you did to evaluate that project. So that's another suggestion. Final comment I have may not make me popular with some of the, some of the people who spoke, but I've been doing this for two years, so not a long time, but fair enough time to see a lot of environmental documents. This, I thought, was a very clear environmental document. It was easy for me to understand, which is a challenge. So you did a good job with that, and I appreciate very much the work that you did here. I also appreciate the work the staff did on this.
And Commissioner, if I could just offer one clarification on something you brought up about the revised, partially revised draft EIR being a standalone document, it is actually a portion of what will ultimately become the final EIR record, which includes the prior draft, the prior final, this document, and then the final that's prepared from that. So, yeah.
Robin Dahlgren, I just wanted to thank the staff, particularly Patrick and Alex, for educating us and helping us understand this very complex, very detailed, very large project for some of the things that have been up here at the commission till then. A lot of reading, a lot of questions, but a lot of handholding and a lot of help from the staff. So I really wanted to thank you for all your work.
One more comment. There was a lot of comment on fire concerns, and I think that maybe the general public may not know, and I learned a lot when I was in DC a few months ago, that when the fires in state property crosses over into federal property, the state can't go take care of that. And sometimes that makes the problem worse. I don't know how much of this mountain is contained or surrounded by state wildlands. Maybe that should be brought up and let the public know that, hey, there is better fire control in the state than there is the feds, because the feds won't pay for a lot of stuff. They just don't care right now. And what I met with people back there, they know it's a concern, and they are working on a better plan to let the state fight that fire and get paid back for it. So I think that needs to be addressed as well, so people will be maybe less concerned and know that the state is here to help them. It's a federal problem, and I don't, and let them know maybe how much of this land is surrounded by state or federal property, because I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, I might, might mention, maybe not totally agree with that, but I think it would be good to identify within the basin or the vicinity, the national forest land. And actually, I think what would happen if there was a major wildfire in this area, with the national forest land coming in, there would be a pretty major attention that was paid by it nationally, and you'd see some very experienced fire teams come in and work with the local people to take care of the fire. So at any rate, but the, the national forest connection with Suave Valley is probably a pretty important factor to show on the map somewhere or talk about.
Appreciate that comment. And just for everyone's benefit, the prior, you know, project entitlement period, we did have a very close level of coordination with our CAL FIRE staff, as well as the, at the time, Squaw Valley Fire Department, now Olympic Valley Fire Department. We are continuing on with that. We do have a coordination meeting with them coming up that is also going to include CAL FIRE staff, and we're going to continue on with those discussions.
I'd say involve the national forest, FIRE staff in that, in that discussion also.
A, a great suggestion, thank you.
Perhaps an appendices with mutual aid agreements between these different entities so we can see it in writing.
Okay, is that kind of wrap up where we're at? It's not five o'clock yet. But I'll tell you what, we don't have a decision to make today. I, hopefully, we've been somewhat helpful with the public and us in terms of where the document's at, and so we'll look forward then to see in the final. And so with that, oh, give us a break and close the meeting. Thank you all.